Good evening, everyone. We're going to start the city council meeting. This is the city council meeting for Tuesday, June 18th, 2024. Welcome. This meeting will be conducted in person in the Sanford City Council chambers and via remote video and teleconference pursuant to one MRSA Section 403B, 2D, and Section 6 of the Sanford City Council Rules of Procedure. Members of the public may join the meeting by phone by dialing 1-929-205-6099 using meeting ID 85102804034 and password 806158, or via computer at the website provided on the Sanford website. Members of the public may also submit comments via the City of Sanford website at www.sanfordmaine.org under Government, City Council, Contact the Council. I would like us all now to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I am sorry this evening that our wonderful mayor is unable to join us. We are going to currently have a moment of silence. And a roll call this evening. You can tell I started that a little early. Forgot the moment of silence. Again, the mayor is not with us this evening, Ms. Brink, and we have Council Stackpole.
Present.
Council Hanselman.
Present.
Council Martel.
Present.
Council Trenchmontang.
Present.
And Council Hitchcock.
Present.
And with us tonight is also the city manager Steve Buck and his assistant Larissa Ricketts. The minutes of the regular city council meeting held on June 4th, 2024, Item 24-265-01, may I have a motion?
Move we approve. Second.
Are there any comments on the minutes or any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous. 24-266-01, order to approve the minutes from the executive session of the city council held on June 4th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
Motion to pass.
Council Trenchmontang, yeah?
A second.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Six to zero. City Council Subcommittee Report. Huh? Five? Six?
I had to abstain because I was missing.
Oh, my God.
Still the cross key.
That's right. And they lost, which was disappointing. Yes, okay. Okay, City Council Subcommittee, I'm going to start this evening. Just a couple of things. We had a discussion at the plan, at the zoning Subcommittee about food trucks. A lot of the conversations centered around the work we're going to be doing with the RACE grant and where food trucks would make sense. How could we set up so that food trucks could hook into power? I know we talked a lot about how food trucks don't necessarily need to because generators are so much better, but the general i concept is we're going to be doing some adjustments to our food truck ordinance, and we're going to be hoping to start placing them into our thought process as we are doing planning within our community. We did talk about Springvale. In particular, we talked about what a great site it would be below the fire station location, kind of along the road where Jagger Mill is. The new fire sta-, the new future fire station. So we discussed every part of the community because we know it's going to be important in the future. It's a new business and it's a very popular business. So that's what we talked about at zoning. Good discussion, actually. And the Public Works has done an excellent job putting out information about where these would make sense in our community. At the leadership meeting for the Sanford, with the Sanford Schools, we, one of the big issues we discussed, other than Lafayette School, was the voting locations. After discussion over the last two meetings, over the last two months, the Sanford School Department has agreed that the best location for a one-voting spot would be the Sanford High School. It makes more sense because those students are able to miss a day far more easily than grade school or middle school. We liked either location, either the Sanford High School or the Sanford Middle School. So coming forward, and I want everybody pre-warned, coming forward will be discussion of one-voting location, which is what a lot of communities, even communities our size or larger, are moving towards because it is mu-, far easier for the town clerks, city clerks, to manage one-voting location, especially, we really, we're not Chicago, we're not Boston. It can be done in a 23,000-person community. So we're going to be having those discussions, though, coming forward, hopefully being all set for November. So that was one I want everybody to be forewarned of. And the other great thing I wanted to let you know about, Larissa Ricketts and I attended a key ceremony where they gave a key for a Habitat for Humanity house to the new owners on Allen Street in Springvale. It is, it is a lot that the city owned. I remember when it used to be two ownerships of a split house, which is very unusual here in Sanford. It's common in Bitterford. Finally, it was in one ownership, bad ownership. Finally, the city took it. We took it down, and now there are going to be two new homes there. I happen to know the new, one of the new owners, the husband, it's an older couple. I think they're going to be great residents of the neighborhood, and I was lucky enough to be able to give them their key. So it was a great day. It was hot. Larissa and I agree, it was very hot, but it was a great day. And Ann Hanselman, you have some information on property and public safety?
I do, thank you. So Property Subcommittee met. The deputy mayor, mayor, and myself were in attendance. There was a brief discussion on the council resolution regarding displaying of flags at the city hall flagpole, and there was general consensus after that discussion that we may revisit the resolution at some point in the future based on additional conversation, but that due to the lack of changes on the original legal opinion when that resolution first came into effect, that the vote to fly the, the pride flag for the month of June would stand without any further action. We also reviewed, or the initial work began on some proposed parks ordinances, and there was consensus from the Subcommittee to continue that work to codify our park policies here in Sanford, and that'll become an ongoing project that we'll see in the future as a full council. We also discussed Chapter 128-31, which will be in discussion this evening. We, I also met with the Public Safety Subcommittee, Councilor Martel, and the mayor and myself were there. It's been really great because we hear from dispatch, fire, and police these days, and it's a great meeting. We heard from dispatch that Assistant Director Darcy of Bolito, I feel like I pronounced her name wrong, and Sergeant Adams are actually going to be part of a documentary that was filmed for the yellow flag law, so they got a chance to be on film, which is exciting. We also reviewed current staff levels, which for our public, excuse me, for our regional dispatch center, continue to stay strong. There are new, three new hires being welcomed to the team, which is also exciting. And then just a summary of dispatch activity. Again, a reminder, it's a regional dispatch center, so all of their activity included 5,582 police calls, 979 fire and EMS calls, 360 animal cases, and 2,413 911 calls. So very busy dispatch center. We also heard from the fire department. There were three significant retirements that I want to mention in, in thanks and also gratitude for their service to our community. Tom Moses retired after 25 years with our department. Stephen Wollett retired after 24 years with our department. And I think, as we discussed previously, folks know AC Arnold is retiring here in August. The good news is that he's moving back to Michigan to be close to family, which is exciting. And we do have four candidates for this position, so the hiring process has begun for the AC position. In addition, the fire department is hiring three to four firefighters, and we currently have eight candidates with testing beginning this week for those positions. Lastly, the police department brought forward a really robust conversation around our requirements for issuing a permit to provide wrecker service here in Sanford. Other communities near us have gone to what's called a local preference approach to their wrecker services, and from the gist of the conversation, that's adversely impacted some of our local wrecker companies' ability to work in those communities outside of Sanford. And so one of our companies, Chandler's Auto, brought forward the concept of Sanford also approaching our wrecker services here in Sanford based on a local preference. It was a really good conversation. We heard from multiple wrecker, folks that hold wrecker permits here in town. After that conversation, based on the comments from our PD and dispatch, that the quality of service we are currently receiving is excellent, both from services provided from folks based in Sanford and outside of Sanford. There was Subcommittee consensus to not make any changes at this time. In other exciting news, our police department has started bike patrol, patrols. You've probably seen them around town, and it's really exciting. And on May 20th, Representative Mestarkio presented Sergeant Colleen Adams with her certificate of recognition from the 131st Legislature. That's it.
I think they announced a date, too, for the get out, the national night out. I got an email today. Is it August 13th, I think? Start getting letting people know. August, Tuesday, August 13th. Probably a good thing to stick into public safety. Next, we have the city manager's report, which will include a report about the Heritage Crossing encampment this evening.
Thank you. So I'll start with the light items first. First is an announcement on the Community Resilience Grant. Our city planner, Aaron Moriarty, worked to qualify for and apply for a Community Action Grant. After assembling the Community Resilience Committee to establish the city's highest qualifying area of application, an application was made. The invitation to submit was received, followed by the city's submission, and as of today, we confirm that we, the city is to receive a $50,000 grant for climate change vulnerability assessment. So that drills down to, we're going to reassess our storm water management capabilities in the downtown as being grossly deficient, and what we can do to address those as we're having more severe storms in recent years. So in the future, we'll have an RFP for Engineering Services that will be brought back for the city council's consideration for the selection of an engineer to do that assessment work for us, all paid for under the Community Grant. At the last meeting, I believe it was, questions were asked about ladder 37, that's our large ladder truck, about the type and number of repairs for that particular truck. Since new, the ladder has been plagued with issues, keeping it from full service on a number of occasions. Chief Susie and AC Smith are now expressing their discouragement with Allegiance, who is the manufacturer of the truck. It's a Pierce-based truck, as our confidence in the former Saco, former Saco repair facility has ended. Allegiance made good and took the truck to their Methuen, Mass. repair facility and did a bumper-to-bumper review and repairs on the truck to put it back in proper working order. When it was returned to service, however, there was a number of noted issues still remaining. Those, an onsite technician was dispatched the following day, made all of the necessary adjustments and repairs. There's still a couple of parts that we're waiting for, but the truck is in full service at this point in time. So they've closed that Saco facility as far as doing that work, and they are now providing us with onsite service technicians as might be needed in the future. Have the municipal clerk certification of the secret ballot elections, so I note that for the Article 1, which was the vote on the school budget, that there was 852 yes and 346 no, and eight blanks. So there was 71% voting in favor of the school budget this year, and it was an 8% voter turnout overall for the election.
So Steve, just a quick one on that. First of all, it's the 24-25 budget, so when you have it, the city manager's report for the minutes.
Okay.
This, we talked to the superintendent of schools. This was a far higher turnout than last year. I know people are upset that there isn't a big turnout in June, which is one of the reasons we don't do anything large in June, because we don't get good turnout. But this was far higher than there had been in the prior year. So just, I thought people should know that.
And the last element I have is Johnson's Mills, Johnson's Mill Bridge. That's MDOT number 1225, just in case you were wondering. You probably wanted to know what that M dot number was. Anyways, it spans the Great Works River. It's on the Sand Pond Road. It's right on the Sanford-North Berwick town line. Inspection reports expressed concerns with the corrosion and moderate section loss. It's a steel pipe buried in the ground. Nothing's that, that significant. City Council received a preliminary assessment from Wright Pierce in the, in the council chambers here a couple of months ago, expressing three possible alternatives for the, for the repair and/or replacement ranging from $1.4 to $3.3 million. Sanford and North Berwick administration met with Wright Pierce and expressed concerns with the higher-than-expected pre-engineered cost. Observational and other data was presented indicating possible inaccuracies in the GIS and the FEMA data that was used for the flood, floodplain calculations. Pursuant to that input, the engineers concurred with the observed data, and they're now reworking the, the project. So it's going to significantly change the size of the pipe, is what it, what it amounts to. And we expressed our favorable, a future favorable review of a pre-molded concrete sectional pipe that we could do as a locally administered project. And our two departments could work cooperatively from each side of, of the river, on each side of the town line, do a complete road closure, and knock this project out in a far more cost-effective manner. So we'll, we'll wait back for their reengineering on that and see what they come back with.
I have, I don't know if anybody else feels this, but I remember seeing that going, is it really that big? Or is it that? Yeah, I was surprised at the cost as well. So this is really good news. It, it makes more sense. Next is the encampment update.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll give you a detailed report. There's been a lot of questions around the closure of the encampment off in Heritage Crossing. I know Channel 13's covered it. Channel 6, I think, was supposed to cover it tonight. Portland Press-Herald, Sanford-Springvale News. In observing that, we've, we've issued a press release. We've issued a number of documents. It's amazing to me to see the difference in numbers that are reported and what the perspectives are. So the following is, is a, as strong a summary as I can give you at this point in time. So the Heritage Crossing encampment has been a focal point for well over a year. The community, the community partners, and I'll reference all of them here later, coordinated under the 19 strategies to address encampments humanely and effectively, as established by the United States Interagency Council on Homelessness. So that is a federally accepted set of standards, and I can't express strongly enough, the community partners that the city has worked with, and again, I'll list those here later, as being those entities that allowed us to fulfill all of those 19 strategies, put the infrastructure in place to be able to address this and, and any other future encampments. So working with the partners, we were able to reach the capacity and implement. The city council adopted the 19 strategies as of June 4th of this year. So the encampment was located on property formerly owned by Regco Inc., which is a legacy of the past mill industries. It left behind land and buildings in disarray that had been determined by the city council to be dangerous and hazardous. They've held hearings on that. It has had a court action, a writ of execution to abate to the owner. All such actions have been unanswered at this point in time. The site is a brownfield site in need of remediation. The Maine Department of Environmental Protection has inspected, they were here on June 12th, inspected and noted the pollution that's on the site, both solid waste and water quality control issues. But over this period of time of the property owner being non-responsive, the encampment grew in numbers and disarray over the past two years, in which Regco Inc. refused communications from the city. It would not grant permission to enter and/or address. Those inactions resulted in an encampment of deplorable and unsafe conditions, not fit for human occupation. I would challenge anybody that walked through that site, as we, as we did on Monday, and tell me that any human being should have been left in that situation. Last fall, within the encampment, they were directed to the Warming Center, which opened at the Lafayette School and operated by the York County Shelter Program. So I'd like to thank the Shelter Program for opening that, that essential service here this past winter. People were served throughout the winter until the center was closed on May 1st. Just before the closure, 25 of the 42 people took services and were placed into permanent housing solutions. So obvi-, so obviously, those people did not return to the encampment. Others focused, refused services, and did return to the encampment, which was recognized as a dangerous and hazardous site, unfit location for human habitation, and a public safety site of concern. Notification was consistently made during the operation of the Warming Center that the encampment would be subject to future closure due to these conditions, especially prior to the closure of the Warming Center. All occupants were so notified. Property of the encampment became tax-acquired on April 4th, 2024. So it went from the former ownership of Regco. The tax lineage matured, and the city acquired the property on that day. Notice continued to be provided to the resource, by resource workers and police officers making regular contacts and offering resources and services to those encamped there. On May 20th of this year, the police department's mental health unit officers began daily bike patrols to increase contact and awareness with those in the encampment. Notice of the pending closure for June 17th due to public health and safety concerns were made daily, as well as the offer of resources and services. Some people began to transition out of the encampment. On the day of June 17th, the city approached the encampment to start removal of trash, debris, and bulky items as a first step towards the closure. Emphasis on first step. The plan was left fluid, knowing, unknowing of who is going to be there, what the response was, what the people that may still be there were going to do, because they had not been able to commit to any plans prior to this. So that was an unanswered question when we arrived. Police, Fire, and Public Works crew arrived at 7:00 AM and started clearing the trash and bulky waste items as soon as possible. Public Works provided two loaders, two skid steers, a mini excavator, and two 18-yard dump trucks. The street was closed off for public access. Traffic control was placed on both sites, both ends of the street, because of controlling the construction site. And before any action was taken, we walked into the, into the encampment. I was with DC Small. We had our mental health officers there, and we interacted with 10 people. There were 10 people left in the encampment at that point in time. Each person was interacted with directly, was communicated with, and we presented them with options, the resource, of the resource hub. The resources were made available to them. I want to commend the mental health officers and, and other city staff for their compassionate interaction with those that were encamped there. I observed officers that knew them personally, had reacted, interacted with them time and time again, and were very compassionate about talking with them about their options and what their next steps were, but they were not going to be allowed to stay in the encampment. So I'd like to commend the staff for, for that positive interaction with, with, with our individuals. So again, there were 10 people known to be there at that point in time. Again, they were all well-known to our police officers, our mental health workers, as they had contacted them many times before. Each individual was engaged for a plan, provided the resource guide, directed the resource hub, and was requested to work with us to develop a clear plan as far as how they could leave the encampment. It was noted that there was a veteran in an RV. He received a voucher later that day from the resource hub. Four individuals called and received a pickup from individuals that they must have known that they were relocated to private property. One person was transported to a private property with all of their belongings to a location that authorized them to, to go there. Four individuals utilized the secure storage that's at the Sanford Police Department under 24/7 lock and key, but accessible 24/7, and only two refused any and all services and interaction with our departmental staff. Property was left secured by the road closure as Public Works returned this morning, again on June 18th, to continue the bulky wa-, waste items that could be removed mechanically. So again, as we started off Monday, the intent was to simply remove trash and bulky waste items to show that we were serious about the future encampment enclosure, but throughout the day, we saw cooperation with the individuals that were there. They, they pulled their materials out that they wanted to keep. They were relocated or put in storage, and they chose to exercise other options other than being in the encampment. So at this juncture, the city council has just reviewed a quote from Trauma Services. They are a biohazard remediation company. They will be brought to the site by July 8th at 9:00 AM in the morning to start the biohazard cleanup out there in the, in the encampment. If you could see what was out there, it's truly shocking to see what was, was out there. Public Works continued to haul again today and do the appropriate disposal. They'll be working with Trauma Services when they get here on July 8th. As far as the removal of the waste, they took out nine 18-yard trucks rounded up of bulky waste and trash, an estimated of over 170 cubic yards. They removed 65 propane tanks. There, there, I observed directly that there were three 20-gallon medical sharps containers full of needles, as well as five-gallon buckets with medical sharps in them at that particular location, as well as scattered throughout the encampment. There are needles everywhere on the ground. Everywhere. Of all the sites underneath the tents, sharps are everywhere out there. So Trauma Services, as a biohazard resource company, will, will handpick and, and extract all of those materials, bag them, will haul, they will dispose of all biohazards, as well as any remaining propane tanks. The human waste and such will all be taken by Trauma Services. We'll continue to take the solid waste and bulky waste in our own departmental resources. I want to commend the providers at the resource hub. So each year, the, the city has worked with its partners, and the partners have stood up a resource hub to make all available resources more readily available. It's been set up at the York County Community Action, adjacent to Heritage Crossing in the past. This year, it was set up at the Sanford Housing Authority specifically so that the individuals will come out of the encampment, seek services, and start to remove themselves from that area. President at the resource hub was the city's general assistance program, Sanford Housing Authority, York County Shelter Program, York County Community Action Corporation, as well as the Region 1 Homeless Hub. Resource hub was put into action, again, over the past couple of years. At this time, it was, it was stood up starting June 10th. It was operating from the hours of 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and this, this week, it will continue from 1:00 to 3:00, each, each of the, the remainder of the week. They saw 78 visits from 51 unique people that came to the hub, starting as, as of 6:17 as of yesterday. Six people entered into the York County Shelter Program. One person went to Milestone. One veteran went to permanent housing. Nine people that were previously unhoused were placed into permanent housing using the Sanford Housing Properties, Sanford Housing Property before the hub even got started, and that was using the case conferencing of the navigators. So there's three of our community partners that have housing navigators. They work cooperatively. They meet regularly. They share resources. They coordinate case management. It's truly something of fascination to see the, the amount of coordination that are wrapped around the people that will take services. Emphasis on the people that will take services. Five people were placed into housing using the Sanford Housing Authority's vouchers that were specifically reserved for homeless individuals. So by that count, 22 people from, from last week through to current were placed into housing solutions and/or treatment. So the homeless task force will meet again on July 1st to continue actions, drilling down on what's been done to date, and continuing to solidify our coordination moving forward. I'd like to give recognition to the community partners. Present with us was York County Community Action Corporation, the York County Shelter Programs, Sanford Housing Authority, our own police department's mental health unit, two officers and two caseworkers. We had coordinated entry in play. We've worked with and obtained funding from the Governor's Office of Policy and Innovation in the future, when funding was unable to be had elsewhere. We've worked with PATH, which is Project for Assistance in Transition from Homelessness, Options, the Overdose Prevention through Intensive Outreach, naloxone, and Safety, Main Access Points, the Harm Reduction Program, of course, the Sanford Police Department. The, the homeless management information system is used for coordinated case management and tracking individuals. We've worked with the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, the Women, Infant, and Children Nutrition Program. We study the asset-limited income-constrained employee. That's the Alice Report that you heard me talk about fairly regularly that was put out by the Southern Maine United Way, United Way of Southern Maine, I apologize. It's an excellent report that gives you some specific insight as to what the true cost is of living here, is the, is the working individuals that don't have enough income to, to be able to stay in place. And the City of Sanford's General Assistance Program. As a city manager, I'd like to recognize the exceptional planning and careful treatment during the cleanup of the property. Sanford Police Department, the command, the command staff, the mental health units officers and the patrol officers. They covered the planning, the site control, and worked diligently with the individuals within the encampment to continue to offer services and meet their individual needs throughout the existing, through the use of existing resources. Time and time again, I watched the interaction of, of, with the individuals that, many times they refused services. I, I observed they're unable to make that decision for themselves, and that bothers me extensively. So their knowledge of the individuals was invaluable in working to identify solutions that would be accepted by the people that we worked with on that day. Sanford Public Works crew for their skilled equipment operation in difficult and hazardous conditions. They were instructed not to hand-touch anything out there. That's for the biohazards team to address, not our staff. They did everything mechanically. They did everything mechanically. I would like to separately recognize Deputy Chief Small, who's here this evening, for the planning to address the encampment in a humane and trauma-informed way. Deputy Chief, I thank you very much for that. I'd also like to further recognize Assistant Public Works Director Peter Smith. I don't think he's in the room here tonight. But I'd like to thank Peter for his coordination of the work formed under very difficult conditions. His staff performed excellent out there on that day. As a city, we'll now continue to work diligently to address the individuals that are unhoused, who will accept at varying levels of services, to prevent any such hazardous conditions to return, and to proactively break any cycle of homelessness within our community. So I'd like to be able to focus now on preventing those people from ever becoming unhoused. You will see a number of people that are still unhoused on our community. They're going to be moving around. We're going to continue to engage, work, and offer resources to them. So know that, that that is a constant effort of engagement and offering resources, and until they choose to take resources, those efforts will continue. So thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Buck. We, the City Council, had plenty of time to ask some questions because we've had some information for the last twenty-four hours, and I think a lot of what he wrote answered some of the questions we had. He added into his report. But I want to make sure that there are no other questions from city councillors? No? Okay, seeing none, I believe we'll move on with the agenda. Public participation, is there anybody written down? Thank you. Thank you. Okay, and is there anybody who would like to speak online? Is there anybody who didn't know that if you'd like to speak about a non-agenda topic that you'd have to sign up because you're allowed to just raise your hand as well? Anybody? Okay, moving on then. Public hearings, the City Council will take, oh, no. Communications and presentations, twenty-four dash two five, I feel like Becky, twenty-four dash two five oh dash zero one. Recognition of the Sanford Springvale Rotary Club, and I see Rotarians in the audience. January Thaw fundraiser, I'm going to assume, knowing Elias's personnel, no. Colleen, come on up, our own Colleen Adams. Excellent. Yeah, he'll join you no matter what. You know this. I think there's, I think they're getting something. They had a big board. And I see Bob from Subway. His grandmother was a tenant, and so I've known him since he was very young. Practically a baby, yes. Wonderful. So we have joining our own Colleen Adams, who works in the mental health unit for the Sanford Police Department. We have Elias Thomas from Rotary. We have, I'm not going to know your last name.
Myatt.
Myatt, thank you. Yeah, I'm going to forget. Your mother, your grandmother unfortunately has been gone for a while. She was fun. And we have Kim LeChance sitting in the back. Okay.
So I'm Colleen Adams. Not only am I a resident of Sanford, I am also a Rotarian with our Sanford Springville chapter. In January twenty-twenty-two, the Sanford Springville Rotary Club recognized additional funding was needed to help the people experiencing homelessness in the city of Sanford. It was January twenty-twenty-two when they held their first-ever January Thaw fundraiser and partnered with the Sanford Housing Authority to distribute funding to our local people experiencing homelessness. In addition to monetary donation, the event also gathered tons of warm winter jackets, hats, gloves that were distributed to our local folks. This past January Thaw was held at Meaty Thai, which was delicious, in Sanford, and raised twelve thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars. This brings a total raised in the three years to over thirty thousand dollars. These funds have touched the lives of many people in our city, and on behalf of the city of Sanford, we would like to say thank you to the Sanford Springville Rotary Club and generous citizens who've made this event successful.
Okay, everybody turn around. We're going to get some photos. We have two phototakers. Jordan will get the best one, most likely. Eric's going to try really hard to win this one.
And Deputy Mayor, the amount raised in January is particularly impressive because, if you remember, it was the night of a horrible snowstorm, wasn't it?
Yes, it was.
Well, the storm was, you know.
Actually, Ann, that evening, it was a horrible storm, and we had more people than had ever come to the event in the previous two years. We had over, I think we had eighty-six people come. Several people came from Massachusetts and New Hampshire. They just bowled their way through the storm. What storm? There was no problem. So, and I hope, I can't speak for my friend here for next year, but if he's willing to allow this to occur again, I'd be very happy to chair the event, as I have for the last three years. So it's really a proud moment for Rotary, and it just, listening to Steve's report, somehow, in a small way, we've made a difference to, towards alleviating that. And Colleen and Lacey are amazing, and we're proud to have them both as members of our Rotary Club. Thank you very much.
They represent well, don't they?
This event will continue for sure. We definitely appreciate the partnership and our community. And also, just want to say thank you to Meaty Thai and their owner and staff. I mean, they had just done the expansion on their building, which allowed us to have enough seating for everybody that night, which was fantastic.
We thank whoever it is that allowed them to actually open that night.
Yes, thank you.
They got the clearance that morning, I think at eleven-thirty, so. That was good. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And Bob, I think you should make him just your social chair. I mean, it's what he likes to do anyway, so, yeah. He can be the social chair. Hi, Tim.
Hi. Thank you, Elias, and to each member of the Sanford Springville Rotary Club for this thoughtful and significant donation to support the Sanford Springville community and all of its citizens. January Thaw was a great event during a snowstorm, as we mentioned, but we have no worries of that tonight. The history of the Sanford Springville Rotary Club and its constant endeavors to make life better to others has made a difference for countless people since nineteen twenty-three. Sanford Housing Authority is more than grateful to Rotary, as well as the Sanford Police Department, for your combined efforts to work with us on this project that benefits those whose lives have fallen into a place where help is needed, just one person at a time. Don't worry, the whole notebook's not full. The Sanford Housing Authority has and continues to work closely with our community partners to distribute these Rotary funds toward the circumstances of homelessness and food insecurities. Just a few of the recent ways we have been able to assist members of the community with these Rotary funds are shower vouchers to use at the local YMCA. Can you imagine what a treasure this is for those who have had to forego this daily self-care and pride for extended lengths of time? Hotel rooms, to be safe, dry, and warm, with a direction in sight. Back rent, to be able to stay in a place that is called home. Children staying in school and being with friends. Tickets for a family to return to their home in North Carolina, reuniting a family and a new beginning on life. The Sanford Housing Authority does not accept or take any administrative fees for managing the account and the funds, so that each single dollar is able to be put towards citizens of our community. As a decades-long member of the Sanford Springville Rotary and of the Board of Commissioner for the Sanford Housing Authority, I could not be prouder to be standing here tonight, representing both of those and my community. Having two of the organizations whose missions I have built my life, being, making a difference, is extraordinary. With great pride, admiration, and friendship, I also share that Diane is an active and fun member of our Rotary Club. It's tucked back there. In addition to her many skills in housing, and many, she is also a great chicken liver cook. We'll see you all in August, and maybe she'll be at the helm. Sanford Springville has many organizations, businesses, and individuals that are all striving for one thing, to make a difference in our community and for each person who lives here. We never know what one gesture or spoken word can do to change a life. Rotary is dedicated to this mission, as well as many others. I will say thank you once again to everyone in our club, to everyone in this room, and everyone that makes a difference, wants to make a difference in people's lives. I will say thank you again, and end with one of my favorite quotes, "The best way to find yourself is to lose yourself in the service of others," by Gandhi. Thank you.
I don't think I could have said that better myself, Kim. That was excellent. I was just thinking as you were speaking, I'm like, look at all the groups she's checking off. We do have an amazing community. And in there, I mean, she talked about Rotary, which is made up of so many amazing individuals, the mental health unit, the YMCA with the showers. We have some amazing people and organizations in our community, and we thank you very much. I know Colleen is going to find this sum to be very important for the work she do, she does, as well as Diane. So, thank you. So on to even brighter things. I think we've had, we have a great night ahead of us. Twenty-four dash two six four dash zero one, the presentation of Sanford Spirit of America Award for twenty-twenty-four. This is our first, yes? We've been trying to do this for a few years, and I think we've hit upon the perfect person who we all have a great deal of respect for up here, to give the first award to. Ann Hanselman is going to meet you at the podium, Ms. Diane Small.
It's with, and this is a different place to speak from, isn't it? It's with my personal honor that I get to read a proclamation honoring Diane G. Small with the Sanford, Maine Spirit of America Foundation Tribute for Commendable Community Service, today, June eighteenth of twenty-twenty-four. Whereas Diane Gale Small was born in Sanford, Maine, and grew up in Springvale, where her parents owned Gary's Market on Mill Street, and her father was a sergeant at the Sanford Police Department. And whereas Diane graduated from Sanford High School, I feel like it's me that we put the date in here.
Did you? She's a tad older than I am.
Whereas Diane graduated from Sanford High School and attended the University of Southern Maine, where she earned her bachelor's degree in psychology and biology. And whereas Diane has two children, who I think are with us this evening, Emily and Will, and a granddaughter, all of whom attended or currently attend Sanford schools, Emily actually following in her mother's footsteps and who now works at Bitterford Housing Authority, and Will, who now owns Bromac Orchards in Acton. And whereas Diane married Assistant Police Chief Eric Small in November twenty-twenty-two, and whereas Diane served as Sanford's General Assistance Director from two thousand seven to two thousand twelve, and worked at York County Shelter Programs from two thousand twelve to two thousand nineteen, where she helped found the Lehman Way Recovery Center in two thousand eighteen. And whereas Diane is a great chicken liver cooker, no, that's not in here. Whereas Diane was appointed to the position of Director of Sanford Housing Authority in October twenty nineteen. And whereas during her time at the Housing Authority, Diane has been a key partner to the city of Sanford, helping to meet the need for senior housing in the community, purchasing homes and selling them to those needing workforce housing, tirelessly advocating for the rights of people from all walks of life to have safe, affordable, and appropriate housing options, and serving on and helping guide the efforts of the Homeless Task Force. And whereas Diane serves on the board of a number of organizations, including the United Way of Southern Maine, Sanford Regional Economic Growth Council, the Sanford Land Bank Commission, Thriving in Place, Kenny Bunk Savings Bank, the Genesis Fund, First County Foundation, Southern Maine Agency on Aging, and the Sanford Springville Rotary Club, I'm tired of just saying them all, among others. Whereas Diane serves on the Maine Association of Public Housing Directors, where she helps affect change in public policy on housing throughout the state of Maine. And whereas, under her leadership, the Sanford Housing Authority is making plans to develop a new housing-first facility to help ensure that those with some of the most challenging barriers to securing housing have the support and safe housing they need to build stability in their lives. And whereas, she has been instrumental in drafting the Nineteen Strategies for Addressing Homeless Encampments adopted by the Sanford City Council in June of this year. And whereas Diane has consistently gone above and beyond what is expected of her in any position she holds, dedicating extraordinary personal effort to ensuring that safe, secure, and appropriate housing and shelter options can be provided for all people in our community. Now, therefore, the City Council of the City of Sanford, Maine, on behalf of the citizens of Sanford and Springvale, does hereby extend our very sincere gratitude and appreciation to Diane G. Small in recognition and appreciation of her outstanding work to help make our community a better place for all with the two thousand twenty-four Sanford Spirit of America Foundation Tribute. And you know that the mayor needs the family to come up for a photo, right? So we're going to honor the mayor's wishes, even though she's not here.
Can I quickly recognize my staff, who really do most of the work?
I see them in the audience. I would love it if you recognized your staff. So let's do a staff photo. Let's do a staff photo. How's that? Come on up.
And I also have commissioners.
I think they should come up for a photo.
They should come up for a photo.
Come on, guys. Come on.
And our board commissioners are here as well.
I would love it. I think you would all greatly appreciate this photo in the future. So please, however you want to align yourself, who's going to take the photo? Jordan, just back up for Eric. Okay, the next is a family photo. But in the meantime, I'd like you to know that George was on. Kendra has been watching, as has Lauren. They have both come on. I'm sure they have hearty congratulations for you.
They have. All right, kids.
Oh, and Megan Jenner, did she come on for you? I think so. Okay, kids. I'm not as like mean as the mayor. If she was here, she'd be practically dragging you up here. Come on, you can do it. The beautiful family photo.
And thank you, Steve, and thank you, Larissa.
Diane, I just want to say thank you from the entire board. The work you do is phenomenal. We brought Diane, Housing Authorities, who are in a time of change, like every industry, business, organization goes through. We talked about that even in her interview. And Diane has stepped in and embraced the change and made the change happen. And as we've heard in her list of things that she does, can you believe she's been sitting here right now? She has just been amazing and moving forward into the next fifty-year plan that we're working on. So I just want to say thank you again, Diane.
So my only comment is, as doing this for as long as I have, we have gone from an extremely adversarial relationship with our Housing Authority to one that I just think tops any that might be statewide. We really do appreciate it because it is really important that we can work with our Housing Authority on so much in our community. It's the key to everything. Housing is the key to everything, as we all know. So thank you, Diane, from the bottom of our hearts for everything you do. So I'm going to let you all know, now's the time to escape, if you want to escape, because now starts the boring stuff. You have to stay, Andre. I'm sorry. Public participation, we didn't do, okay, public hearings. The City Council will take public comment on the following. Twenty-four dash two five two dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against a new liquor license with malt and venous privileges from Downhill Bagel Company, LLC, four fifty-six A, Main Street, Springvale, Maine. Do I see anybody here to speak in favor? Now's a good time to talk about your business. Come on down. Actually, when you follow something so good, it's a good advertisement for your shop. So go for it.
There you go. Absolutely. Hi, my name is Billy. I know some of you, and some of you have met just today, but I am from away. I moved to Sanford a few years ago. It's been about three years, and opened this bagel business here. Well, we rented the spot in December and started renovating, and we opened on March twenty-eighth of this year. So we are looking to expand into Phase Two of our business. And just a little bit about what we're planning to do. So we are seeking this liquor license because we want to expand what we do and be more than just a bagel shop, more of a cafe meets nighttime destination. So there are numerous examples for this in Portland, Bitterford, up in the midcoast. So there's like Smalls, which is a cafe by day and a wine bar by night. And then there's also numerous, I mean, that's a fantastic example. So we plan to offer natural wines and craft beers on the weekends during our, like, brunch service, but also expanding that to have kind of a chill, small-plates nighttime sort of thing going on. So natural wines and craft beers means that we're not seeking to be a rowdy, honky-tonk type destination at all. But the other thing that I think this opens us up for is inviting in chefs from around the region to do pop-ups at our restaurant, which is super important. I think I used to work in the hospitality industry doing marketing, and why we pushed restaurants so much in a town like Kenny Bunk, Port- restaurants so much in a town like Kenny Bunkport is because good food puts heads in beds. And I think that you can see that in towns like Bitterford. It doesn't just translate to hotels. It translates to like bringing people in who are youthful and vibrant and willing to invest time in their community. So that's part of why we want to expand our operations, get this wine and beer license, and make sure that we can do kind of like fancier upscale things here in Sanford.
I think that sounds exciting. I'm actually picturing bagel chips with all sorts of different cheeses on a cheese night or something, you know?
Exactly. It's the use of that type of bagels.
It sounds amazing. Thank you for speaking. I thought it was a great advertisement. So everybody should know he's in Springvale. As your headache, it's on the right-hand side after the nail American, the nail place and after the Walgreens, just, yeah, right on the corner there.
Where the henhouse used to be.
Where the henhouse used to be, which was very popular. So we're looking forward to having you in our community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. In the village, I should say, in the village.
Yes.
Because that matters.
It does, yeah.
Is there anybody here to speak against? Or anybody else to speak in favor? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any objection or comments on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll declare the consent agenda passed. Old Business, twenty-four dash two-six-zero, which by the way means that your liquor license passed, your malt and vinous, so you're good to go. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Old Business, twenty-four dash two-six-zero dash zero-one, order to approve changes to the City of Sanford ordinance is Chapter 128, Fire Prevention, Article 8, Registration and Permits to Add Section 128 dash 31, Permit Required for Open Fire. This item must be read on two occasions. This is the second reading, and I'd like to invite, oh, there he is. Please, Fire Chief Susie, sorry, sorry, to discuss some of the changes he made between last meeting and this meeting. Thank you.
Certainly. Thank you. So I listened to what Councilor Martell had to say. I went in and added what I took from those comments to clarify. It didn't change the content, just clarifying statements within the ordinance itself to address a few of those issues.
Okay. Does everybody see and read all the changes that were made? And are there any questions, comments, concerns? Yes, Councilor Transmonting.
Yeah, is that a new position, city fire warden? Or is that just clarification on things? You know I had to ask.
I know you did. So when I became fire chief, the wardens were in my office a week later to have me sign papers to become the city fire warden. So I became the responsible party for the state.
Did you get a little extra badge or pin or anything?
I did not.
He only has the clown badge. Everything else is useless. Jonathan, did you have any specific questions after last week? Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for making some of these updates. Just a clarification, and I think I touched on this last time, was is this in any way different from state law?
It is, it is not. It clarifies it for the employees of the city when people call and ask, and the city has an ordinance to back up what state law mandates.
Okay, so the reason for this is just to clarify for the city employees when people call to do, get a permit?
One hundred percent. Most people go online now and get them. We have an avenue to be able to follow some of those, hoping to create better avenues to follow some of those. So we're not chasing smoke when people call that we know they have a permit out, but it gives everybody the same information to use when somebody calls and asks about burning. The city has an ordinance in place, the fire department, all the employees will have the same thing to go by. Without guessing, are we following that? Or a certain other pieces to the state law clarifies it for city ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
So basically, this is to help, well, A, there's no cost. So you go on, you file for a permit. If you can't get a permit, it means you shouldn't be burning.
Absolutely. They shut it down.
And if you do get a permit, it means the fire department's not going to run around with like a chicken with their head cut off, trying to make sure your house isn't burning down. It provides a lot of time savings for the fire department.
Absolutely. Cost savings from running around to those, and it also gives you a list of what to abide by to be able to burn. So it's all listed there at the same time. So you need a permit, you know, you're notified of can do's and cannots, and it's just direction for the general public to be able to get those permits.
Okay, thank you. And one quick other question. You have renters, leases, or contractors may have written permission of the property owner.
Yep.
Should that be must?
The way it's written, I have it as may, not to box anything in or corner anything. But at the end of the day, you can't burn on somebody's property unless you have written permission. If something were to happen, and when the forest rangers show up, they're going to want to see that, just like if you're hunting on somebody's land, they want to see landowner permission. Same way with a burn permit. They want to see landowner permission that you were able to burn there.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, may kind of gives a little bit of leeway, but we'll see how it goes, I guess. At least it's not requiring it, so I think that's fine. Thank you.
It's interesting. I think a lot of people, I mean, I have property, obviously, and I literally, like, I had neighbors and tenants who asked for a car to be removed where they were squatting in the car in the parking area. And until I went down and said, I want them removed, tenants cannot. And so they can't, they shouldn't, can't have a fire on the property either. It's not theirs. They're renting a space, but they're not renting the entire.
That you're responsible for.
Exactly. So, and I have the insurance for it.
That too.
Okay. Councilor Hanselman.
I was, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, I was going to make a motion to approve the changes to the City of Sanford Fire Ordinances, Chapter 128, to add 128 dash 31, Permit Required for Open Fire.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Councilor Transmonting?
I'll second that.
Rate any other comments, questions? Seeing none? All those in favor? Thank you. Twenty-four dash two-two-two. Thank you, Chief Susie. Twenty-four dash two-two-two dash zero-one, order to approve proposed amendments to Chapter 280 of the Sanford City Ordinance for a revision to Section 280 dash 135, Standards for Conditional Use Approval for the Addition of Subsection F, Excavation Contracting Business. This item must be read on two separate occasions. This is the second reading. There have been no changes this week, but do, does anybody need a refresher as to which ordinance this is? Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion to accept this changed, as read.
Do I have a second? Councilor Transmonting?
I'll second that.
Are there any comments, questions, concerns? Okay. Seeing none? All those in favor? Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you, Jamie.
New Business, twenty-four dash two-five-four dash zero-one, order to affirm a fixed-price fuel oil contract with Dead River Company for 35,000 gallons of number-two heating oil at the fixed price of $2.8115 per gallon. And I know Alex Hammerly is here to discuss this. This is an annual thing that we do, and Alex is the one who is gambling online for us. Because that's what it feels like, doesn't it?
It does.
It does.
It does, yes. As you're all aware, I follow oil futures pricing very closely. And Steve and I had been having conversations for some time about what we thought we could do. We were a little concerned because we're a little bit over what our budget allowed for. But watching the markets and seeing how they were changing, after some discussion, we determined that this was the time, when the day that we executed this contract was the time for us to, for us to do that. I can tell you that since that time, the futures price has gone up another 15 cents per gallon. So we didn't buy at the absolute bottom. I don't think anybody has a crystal ball well enough, you know, good enough to be able to figure out what that absolute bottom is, but we did exceptionally well.
It looks like it. Questions? Councilor Martell?
I just wanted to comment that I think the price is very reasonable. I think you did a great job.
Thank you.
Just for public information, can you, so you have 35,000 here. Do you have a rough estimate on how much we use per year?
That $35,000, or 35,000 gallons is based on what we've seen as the average for the last couple of years. I try to be careful because I don't want to overpurchase, because then we end up with fuel oil that we can't use, and it has to be rolled into a new contract, and that gets messy. So in discussion with Ronnie Champlin, we've looked at the last couple of years of purchasing and decided that the 35,000 gallons was the right number for us to buy. It's higher this year than what our last contract was. Our last contract was for 25,000 gallons, but that didn't include the usage for the Memorial Gym.
Thank you.
I love that building, guys. Okay. Do I have a motion to accept this? Do I have a motion to accept?
A motion to accept.
Do I have a second? Councilor?
I'll second. I just have a quick question.
Of course.
How old are the boilers in Memorial Gym? Do you know?
Off the top of my head, I can't tell you the year, but they're not very old.
Okay.
They're maybe 15-year, 15-year kind of vintage.
Okay. And that's probably, that's about what I figured. Because we did a big honeywell upgrade in there, you know, 20, 25 years ago or something like that.
We did a big train upgrade in there a number of years ago, and that involved mostly controls, but it also included providing cooling equipment, where we didn't have cooling equipment before, and better distribution of the heating and cooling in the building.
Those pipes that were going out to the elementary school, are they still, in other words, we were using Memorial Gym to heat the elementary school? Is that, are those discontinued now?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay. All right, so the boilers then are in good enough shape. We don't need to look at this and say we're using an excess amount of oil for Memorial Gym because the boilers are old, or it's, no. Okay. I just wanted to quantify that. Yeah, in the gym, I'm sorry.
The amount of, the amount of heating fuel that we use in the gym is primarily because it's not a very well insulated building.
Yeah. And I'm sure there's a lot of people going in and out.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of thermal mass there, which is helpful in keeping the temperature where we want it to be.
Yeah.
But it's still a very large building, and it's not very well insulated, and so we lose a fair amount of heat when we generate it.
Yeah, no complaints. I'm just trying to clarify the situation.
I remember when the boilers used to go down to town, because I don't have boilers anymore, but not that type anyway, I have gas. But I remember when you'd go down, and you must feel the same way, like, dang it, I'm losing that heat. All the surfaces are going to have to heat up again. It's so much more expensive when you, when it goes down for even the briefest amount of time, because you have to heat all the surfaces and the mass.
Yes.
So I'm sure you feel the same way. Make sure those keep moving, so. Yes, Councilor Hanselman?
And if we were to use in excess of 35,000 gallons, out of curiosity, market rate at that point kicks in?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Do we know how many gallons of fuel Lafayette typically consumes? Do we know how many gallons the Lafayette building typically consumes?
Yeah. No, we don't yet.
I think the thermostat's are going to be coming down in a few buildings. Okay. Okay, are there any other comments or questions? Seeing none? All those in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Alex. Ordered to appoint Kevin Eaton to the position of trustee of the Sanford Sewer District to fill an unexpired term being left by Keith Patterson, correct, until November 5th, 2024. Andre, would you like to introduce Mr. Eaton?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you for putting us on the agenda. I think it's important that with the situation that the Board of Trustees in the Sanford Sewer District is facing right now, this was a great opportunity to have Kevin come in. Kevin is a seasoned veteran trustee. I'm happy that he agreed to come back on board. So this provides continuity for the board as well as continuity for the entire city. So I appreciate the council putting us on the agenda this.
Yeah, I think with everything you're going, it's PFAS. I mean, let's face it, a lot of what the sewer district is dealing with right now. I know, I know, but you know, it's gonna, it's become part of our lingo. Does anybody have any questions for Andre or questions for Kevin?
A quick question on the, it says the term expires November 5th. Does the term actually go through December 31? I was just confused on the expiration date of the term.
So it's my understanding that he'll fill the remaining position, and then if he, excuse me, he'll have to pull papers this September, and if he wishes to, to remain on the two remaining years.
And the reason she asks, and your paperwork might be different, is if we are appointing someone, we appoint them typically to the end of the year. Although typically when we appoint, it is actually till election day.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. Yeah, once someone is elected, they can continue to fill the rest of the term.
I will say, when I joined the Sewer District in 2019, I believe, when I was elected, I think I started that day because I was filling an unexpired term. So that sounded right to me, and then I had to pull papers for the end of that year. But it did start on election day, or the day after election day.
Actually, no. I think she's right. Because technically, the term goes to December 31st?
Correct.
So you have to appoint him till December 31st. The one he gets elected to starts January 1st.
Correct.
Okay, so let's make an adjustment to this to cover you. No, you sure? Oh, you have a different charter?
Their sewer district charter specifically states, if a vacancy should occur on the Board of Trustees more than three months before the next regular election, which is November 5th, three months would be August 5th, the vacancy has occurred more than three months away from the election, somebody is appointed by the council to fill until the next election. And then at that point, actually, January, excuse me, July 25th, 7:30 a.m., you can come in and get your nomination papers, gather 50 signatures, 25 signatures.
So Sue, when is Keith's term up?
Keith was just elected last November.
So he has a longer term than December 31st?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
If he chooses.
Okay, so he's being elected to the unexpired term that goes longer than December 31st. Okay, got it. I thought for some reason it was the end of the year. Okay.
I wanted to add one, one last thing. So Kevin is a full-time clean water worker. He is a collection system operator down for, in York, for York Sewer District, so.
He knows sewer.
Yeah, I like him on the board.
Sorry.
President of Sanford, so keep that in the list.
Yeah, he's, yeah.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So I will just quickly say that when I joined in 2019, both Keith and Kevin were great resources for me to learn a very complicated subject rather quickly, along with Andre, of course. So while I'm sad to see that Keith had to resign a bit abruptly, I am very happy that Kevin has stepped up. So I will happily make the motion to appoint Kevin Eaton to fill the position of trustee of Sanford Sewer District to an unexpired term ending November 5, 2024.
I don't like the way it's worded. I feel like it should say, I know what you're saying, though. Go ahead. Who's the second?
I'll second. I think Anne may have had a question.
I think we're good. I think, yeah, it's just confusing, the way it reads here. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none? All those in favor? There you go. Have fun.
Thank you.
It's nice to know you know what you're doing. That's always, that's always, you know, inspires confidence. Next agenda item, order to, I'm not even reading it from here. Okay. Twenty-four dash two-six-seven dash zero-one, order to ratify a three-year collective bargaining agreement between the City of Sanford and AFSCME Council 93 General Services Union for the period of July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2027, as set forth. Could I have a motion? And then Steve can make comments on the bargaining. Yes, Councilor Transmonting?
I'll motion to go forward with the ratifying of a three-year collective bargaining agreement.
Second? Have a second? Councilor Hanselman?
And I'll second that.
Beat you to the punch, Councilor Martell. Okay, Steve.
So the council's already seen all of the information. Nothing has changed from the last time you reviewed this as work product pursuant to an executive session, so no changes to date. I would note that the negotiation process with our staff was very good, was very good this year. They have a new AFSCME representative, Josh Broso, Josh Broso, that represented them. But I will focus back on the staff was excellent to talk with. We relied on a market analysis that brought their wages to market levels, and then supported that with a 3.5% COLA year-over-year.[1773.86] Minimal changes as far as bereavement leave. We've done a citywide organizational, I want to say, standardization of bereavement leave and the extended language as far as what a family unit is, as it applies to bereavement leave. We had to implement the, for the first time, the Maine Paid Family Medical Leave Act. The language is in there, for whatever the state does with that in the future, it will be in there and adopted. We had to address some language with workers' compensation. With this piece, we had one individual, the garage maintenance supervisor, that we increased the tool allowance to be equivalent to the same as the mechanics in the public works department. And there was a name change for for ICMA to Mission Square. So other than that, it was about market analysis and wages, and then a 3.5% COLA year-over-year. Thank you.
First and second? We have a motion, we have a second. Is there any comments? We've had this discussion in executive session as this has gone forward, so. All those in favor? Thank you very much. I have to read the number. 24-268-01, order to accept the Sanford Safe Streets for All SS4A Safety Action Plan as presented by VHB, a living document intended to address serious and fatal injuries on our streets and roads. We have Matt online? Okay, let's have a motion in a second, and then Matt will present. Do I have a motion? Council Hanselman?
I'd like a motion to accept the Sanford Safe Streets for All SS4A Safety Action Plan as presented.
Council Hitchcock?
Second.
Okay, Matt, you're up. This is Matt Hill, our public works director.
Great, thank you very much. So as you know, we've been working for the last six months to create the SS4A Safety Action Plan through a grant with the USDOT, administered through the Federal Highway Administration. The draft that you see here before you is is a work in progress, as it is intended to be a living document that's going to evolve over the next five years. But basically, we're proposing that the city accept this action plan so that we can further pursue things like demonstration grant funding. But the strength of the action plan is essentially that the city will adopt it and will carry out aspects as detailed in the plan appendices, the tables. So we're proposing to basically have the action plan, the SS4A action plan, reviewed on a monthly basis as part of the Public Safety Subcommittee. As part of that, we'd like to track the progress of the action plan. We'd like to track specific metrics, i.e. serious and fatal accidents that are happening in the city. Of course, we'll do everything we can to protect identities and any protected information. But we do want to have kind of an open public discussion and start changing the narrative about transportation safety in Sanford and Springvale. We can also review things like speeding enforcement and speeding metrics through the dynamic speed enforcement signs that we have already within the city, and then also come up with a list as initially recommended by our consultant to kind of track some of these metrics. We also want to use the SS4A action plan to help bolster our capital improvement program initiatives, such as, as I mentioned, the SS4A documentation grant opportunities, the forthcoming Heads Up Pedestrian Safety Grant Program, installing crosswalk signs throughout our community, and then coordination with Maine DOT three-year work plan or the Maine Strategic Highway Safety Plan. So those are some of the other groups that we can reach out to once we have this action plan formally adopted by the city. There's other cooperative programs and grant opportunities available through police, fire, and EMS, some of those we've been discussing with them. So so these, this plan can actually build on, you know, multiple efforts throughout the the city to create a better culture of safety, essentially. And again, we're going to be tracking the effectiveness of the SS4A Safety Action Plan over the next four years, and we want to adjust it accordingly. Specifically, I think our early targets, what the plan is saying our early targets is, so those, we should take those areas that have the high incident frequency of accidents, cross-reference those where we have areas where we have underserved need for transportation, basically people who have underserved needs for their transportation on a daily basis. That was the goal of of the plan, and this would help us get one step closer to realizing it.
Do we have any questions? This has kind of been a long time coming, right? Excellent, now we have a living, breathing document.
Yes.
Yes, excellent, that's what the goal was. Hopefully, action plans happen that people notice. I suspect they will. We're pretty good at that, we're pretty good at keeping an eye on our plans, right?
The the plan also, I think it keys in initially, and rightly so, on speed. Speed seems to be one of the common perceptions of unsafe roads. It also happens to be one of the common, you know, factors in these serious and fatal accidents. So the faster and more accurately, more comprehensively we can address the narrative of speed in Sanford, the better. That might be coming through engineering studies of speed limits, that may be coming through enforcement, that might be coming through creating that paradigm shift that we were talking about of, if you're in Sanford and you hit a green light, and you go the speed limit north on 109, you're going to hit more greens, and that's going to be more the better.
Council Stackpole?
Matt, what what are the thoughts on the, on e-bikes? That potentially go 30 miles an hour? I'm not saying people are doing that now, the pedal assist, but I've been in New York City, and people are doing 30 miles an hour in New York City, these food service guys. Kind of amazing. I know we don't have that problem here, but looking into the future, I see e-bikes as becoming more and more common. Are there any thoughts on that from the safety committee? I hate to put you on the spot, but it was just something I thought of while I was sitting here, but, no, okay.
No, not at all, we haven't really discussed them whatsoever. You know, there's obviously state laws that regulate them, maybe not as thoroughly as a gasoline or other electric powered vehicles, but I'm sure, you know, particularly if they start to get into serious and fatal accidents, they're going to become an increasing priority for us.
I mean, they're supposed to follow roadway rules.
Yeah, I understand. Maura, Maura is a, is an e-bike owner, and I'm sure she has, she has a little bit more understanding of e-bikes than I do, but I'm a casual observer on it, and I'm slightly interested in in e-bikes. So that's why I've been reading about them, I've been reading about, I'm 70, so I've been reading e-bikes over 70 on Facebook, and it seems like some of these faster bikes are almost like kind of motorcycle-ish, you know, and and that's kind of where I'm coming from, not not your casual assisted pedal driver, but somebody who's going to, I guess you can throttle it too, and just throttle it and go down the middle of the street or whatever on any bike. But anyways, point, point taken, and I'm sure it will come up later with your committee.
If I were to say anything about safe streets for bikes, it would be just add shoulders, add shoulders. And I know that's probably a bigger problem with the state on roads. Rural roads are horrible, they're the best place to ride, but they have no shoulders. That's all I would say, when you're planning roads, try to add shoulders. So yes, Council Hanselman? I'd like to ride a bicycle, by the way.
On the street. Love to ride on trails. But Matt, if you have a pen handy, York County Community Action did suspend their Shoreline Explorer transit option on page seven of the PDF, and that's indefinite, indefinite discontinuation of that that transit option.
Your first.
Sorry to hear that, I did not know.
His first update, unfortunately.
There's still the orange line, but it doesn't go to the lower village or Kinnibunk.
Okay.
Okay, are there any other questions? Seeing none, we have a first, we have a second, all those in favor? Thank you very much. 24-269-01, order to authorize the city manager to allocate unrealized Department of Public Works operations and maintenance funds in an amount not to exceed $400,000 to be rolled into the roadway capital improvement plan budget at the end of fiscal year 2023, 2024. I assume either Mr. Hill or the city manager, Steve Buck, will take this one.
I can start with this, and then I'll rely on Matt thereafter. So for several years now, with last year being the exception, but for several years, the city council has looked at a review on what fiscal resources might be left in the public works department, and they've allocated, in prior years, they've allocated those to be spent, to be expended in the fiscal year. This year finances are very tight, so we're watching all departments very closely. So what we're asking for tonight is to take the unexpended fund balance up to and not to exceed $400,000. If it's less than that, obviously, we will only capture the less, but these are resources within the public works department. When we look at their encumbrances, and we project those out through year-end, we believe there could be an amount up to this amount, but I'm, my bet is likely less. But because they've had unfilled positions within the department, we had a lighter-than-normal winter season, so less use of road treating chemicals, fewer hours of overtime, although that's been been racking up as of late, because still, they're still clearing some tree damage from the April 4th, third, fourth, and fifth storm. So that being said, Matt has developed a series of roads that are listed here in the document. He's put that out to two of our local contractors that have the capacity to do this in a timely fashion. So rather than trying to force that all to be done before June 30th of this year, if if so, approve the motion that's on on the table before you tonight, it would be to capture that amount, not to exceed $400,000, and apply it to this list of roads until the resources are expended. And again, these, these are streets that we've cleared with water and sewer, they won't be re-excavating within that five-year moratorium period and such, and it's streets that can take a maintenance overlay without doing a full box cut and reconstructive activities. And these are those side streets that would generally, they're not general, they're not, they're not, they have not risen for the cost of benefit analysis numbers high enough to get them there, but we know they need to be addressed like today. So that's how the list was developed. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Steve? Oh, Matt, you want to add to the info?
Just one quick point of clarification. I don't think we had intended to enforce these as moratoriums, they're mostly, you know, light capital overlays. As they are kind of like late-season, sorry, late fiscal year roads, the original intent wasn't to hold the moratorium. If we do want to make the moratorium, I do need to, you know, run that by our local utilities and make sure that they've, they've vetted those and made, you know, any changes. But Matt, taking these dollars from the ONM budget into the CIP will give them that allowable time to to make those changes if necessary.
Excellent. Questions?
Well, I have more comment, I don't know if you want to motion before discussion, or if you want me to?
Do we have, you can do the motion first.
I'm not sure I want to.
Okay, then let's do questions first. If nobody does.
A move we approve the information.
Do I have a second? We'll still have discussion. Council Trasmonte?
I'll second.
Council Hanselman?
Thank you, I'm just trying to follow the rules. So I just want to revisit conversations during the budget process related to our, this department's personnel budget, and there was conversation about unfilled positions, continuously, year-over-year unfilled positions. And so I just want to remind us that, as Steve said, this is, since I've been here, maybe the fourth time that we've had these excess funds. I am in support of of addressing these roads, certainly, but when we think about that budget process, right, and those conversations around those continually unfilled positions, and I consider $400,000, that's not an insignificant amount of funds in our budget in in terms of having a little bit of impact on the mill rate, and it does bother me a little bit that we keep having over-budgeted or unused budget funds that we roll into to roadwork. And to me, I'll just ask the question for future council members to consider is, you know, do we need to revisit the actual budget itself instead of continuously having additional funds year-over-year? Thank you.
Go ahead.
So unfilled positions, so you you have the the secondary engineering position that we seek to have for QA QC for road construction. If if not, if not having that position, you'd have to contract that out, we discussed that, so it's a direct offset. We've had a mechanics position that's been open for quite a period of time. When we get into the next round of contract negotiations, we're going to have to address that wage scale. We're not, we haven't been able to hire, predominantly because of the wage scale, mechanics positions have gone through the roof, so there's that one. The rest of it is not because the positions haven't been filled, it's been turnover. I mean, we had two resignations this week. Moving, you know, out of Maine, moving to New Hampshire, another one's going back to a prior career path, had nothing to do with our departmental wages or work conditions or anything like that, it's just different decisions. Those are all impactful, we had just one position away, showed the mechanics of being completely full, but but there it is, this, we're experiencing that constant churn now. So we don't have the 35- and 40-year employees that the department had in years past, so.
Yeah, those, those, those weeks, Steve, both were really related to housing, and they both found housing like in a similar like market down in the Manchester Concord area. They they basically, they found a, a housing opportunity first, and then said, well, I'll just find a job around that.
And I apologize if I didn't have an opportunity to pull the numbers, Steve, but it seems like over the last four years, we've had in the area of 200,000 to 500,000 of unused funds within this particular budget. So my point is just that that's not insignificant from an annual budget standpoint, and I think the council should spend some time talking about it further in the future. Does that make sense?
Yep.
I guess my only comment would be is, some of the cuts, including roads, is a backward-moving step, and that's why I'm okay with putting money back in that we had to cut with, if we have the extra resources. It doesn't mean that we still don't have that shortfall in the budget next year. We're going to be able to stretch out one more year of getting some extra road worked on, but we still have a shortfall because there might not be all these positions that have been left unfulfilled or unfilled in next year's budget. So I guess it's, you know, it's guess, do we want to continue to try to do the roadwork we've been doing, or do we want to have a discussion about whether we return it to the taxpayer? And that's, that's really the discussion, and I, I would prefer to continue to do the roadwork, and that's, that's a personal opinion on my end here, so. Council Stackpole?
Yeah, I think we need, well, the first, first thing I want to say is, I believe, in fairness to the process, the city manager identified these positions as unfilled. Am I correct? Most of these positions were identified to the council as this position is not filled, but we're keeping it in the budget, most of these. So the council did have an opportunity to say, well, if it's not filled, we're eliminating it from the budget, and we didn't do that because we saw value in these positions. And I realize that's not the result of everything, but I think, again, Anne makes an excellent point of transferring a large amount of funds, and I'm going to address that in just a second. But but still, and here's my point, that your budget really is your best estimate of what the the cost in the upcoming year. There's, you can't do this in a municipal setting or an educational setting, maybe in any setting, but particularly in those two where it can be an exact science, you know, where you can hit a bullet with a bullet, you you budget $30 million, and you, your costs are actually $30 million. You're going to miss that because things change. So again, in in fairness to the whole process, I I think you have to look at your budget as your, your best estimate, and I get beat up all the time for saying that, yeah, Stackpole says they're guessing at what the costs are going to be. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, it's your best estimate based on the information that you have, and you're going to miss it a little bit, you're always going to miss it a little bit. And then finally, conclude with with Maura's point, if this comes to pass and you want to return it to the taxpayers, I think we need to have that discussion so it gets ahead of the vote on the budget, if that's possible. But if you want to, then then we can decide that's what we want to do, if that's what our priority is. That's, that's how I see it.
Council Martel had to have his hand in it.
Oh, thank you. I think, and I don't want to speak for Anne, but I think what you're getting at is that if this is sort of a every-year type of thing, then maybe we need to revisit how we're looking at it at the budget time, so that we're not putting, voting to to put money in some particular bucket later on in the year. I really don't have any problem with taking this money and putting it into the roads, because I think people want money to go in the roads. So I don't, I don't see people as, you know, necessarily complaining about this, but I think at tax time, it would be helpful sometimes in making some of those decisions. So I think maybe if we can have a little, a little history on, hey, every, you know, every budget year, we've had some surplus here, maybe we can change some of the decisions we make at that time, so, thank you.
Council Trasmonte?
So I went, during budget season, I talked to Stacy. So I went, during budget season, I talked to Stacy and Ronnie, and same thing. We had all these salaries in here, and you can jump on this after, for hiring and they backfill. So that took it out. We couldn't, we couldn't pull positions because they hire from within, so those positions were put into the budget. And that was my understanding, that we couldn't like take a half a year out of the salary to put it back into the taxpayers. Remember, we were looking at that. So for Public Works, I think we have to have the full, everything that you're doing now. And if we have extra because we don't fill positions, then we can do roadwork. So I think everything, the way it's been going is correct, and I just don't want to take away from that department at all, so.
But just real quickly, Pete, I would add that in light of this discussion, the council maybe ought to have some kind of up and down of, we wanted to go to roads or we wanted to go to-
Yeah, we're going to have that, we're going to have that vote. We'll have that vote.
Next year.
Well, I mean, the first one will probably be what's on the agenda, and if that gets voted down, we can have the discussion. That's what, that's what I'm thinking at this point, but-
So we have an opportunity.
Right, and you know, it's, I'm going to let Council Hitchcock, he had his hand up, speak.
Thank you. I would just, I guess, add that if we're, if the concern is not to take away from positions, but there is, we do have this gap here of, you know, it sounds like on average $200,000 to $500,000, you know, maybe it's worth not necessarily looking at positions, but rather our commitment to the ramp-up. We're talking about having additional funds there without realizing that, oh, we also have this, you know, leftover. So if we're averaging $200,000 to $500,000, maybe it's worth considering that when we talk about adding funds to the ramp-up. If we're not, if we're concerned about, you know, there was a commitment there to add funds for a ramp-up, but if we're not willing to trade off the positions, then maybe it's the ramp-up. And I understand that hurts the roads, but if we think money's actually going to go back there anyway, I mean, it's not as much of an impact.
I just want to remind, we cut $500,000 from the roads. This replaced a lot of it. I guess my only comment on the positions would be that we were damn lucky we had a light snow year because we were that short-staffed. And so I think the staffing is appropriate. I think filling the positions, I think we are facing the same problems that all businesses are facing, is that people job hop. They always think everything's brighter around the other corner, and that's difficult to staff against, unfortunately. So anyway, we have a motion to actually have the $400,000 going to roads. Matt, would you like to comment? I'm sorry.
Yes, oh, thank you. So just a few points, and this is a little scattered because it's kind of responding to everything that's being said. I do want to let the council know, there was about a week where we had, we were looking at where we were going to fill those EO1s, because I know that was a big deal during the budget process, get those EO1s hired. And there was a week where it was going to happen. We had a seasonal guy who was just set to do an EO1. He just elected to do something else, and we thought he was a shoo-in. So we were so close. I also want to emphasize that, and give my kudos to the Human Resources Department. They're working very hard to fill those positions. They're, you know, vetting people and doing the best they can. I do want to also say that we've now internally within our department, we have our five, two fours and two threes filled. So we have those positions now filled and have a pretty strong leadership team within the department. Yeah. The contract negotiation process, as Steve mentioned, is coming forward, and we do hope to, you know, make ourselves more attractive through that. But also this rollover, it effectively is very meaningful for the guys who are doing the work, the guys and gals who are doing the work, that are out here pothole patching every day. And if we can do just a few overlays on some roads and make some, you know, meaningful changes to where they don't have to go back and return to these areas so frequently, that improves morale, and that helps us retain those personnel that are already here. And that's a, that's a big deal to us, you know? That really can't be understated. They know some of those places that are in really bad shape, that they're back like every other week to patch. So thank you for your considerations.
No, thank you, Matt. And it's hard for me to imagine being able to put the road money back very quickly, so this would actually help bridge what I think is going to be a rebuild to that $500,000, but that's to be seen. Mr. Buck?
Yeah, so I almost feel like I'm misleading here as such. The majority of this is not the wages, right? So we have some savings on wages because of unfilled positions and laps throughout the year. But as I'm sitting here looking at the budget again, you know, there's unexpended funds under contract services. The most significant savings year-to-date is in supplies. That's your salt. Your salt, your magnesium chloride. There's savings on equipment maintenance. The city has continuously invested in its fleet. Our mechanics are doing an exceptional job in keeping the fleet up and maintaining that. I'm seeing savings on the vehicle maintenance line as well. So it's in those areas that you've made investments, it's now producing savings that, not different than the police department and elsewhere, Public Works' progressive fleet management program is starting to produce some savings for us. So I would encourage us all to look at that again in next year's budget and such. I just don't want to leave you in the impression that the only reason there's $400,000 anticipated possibly being there is only on salary lapse, on wages. Thank you.
And just so it's really clear for all of us, Steve, if we do not approve the current motion, then those funds would just be in our fund balance at fiscal year-end, correct? And could be used? I mean, they were just sitting on, okay, thank you. Does that make sense to everybody?
Okay. Is everybody ready for a vote? We do have a motion to approve this request. So all those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. 24-272-01, order to close Heritage Crossing to vehicular traffic between the crosswalks at either end of the International Woolen Building on Heritage Crossing effective immediately through August 1st, 2024. I'm going to let the city manager talk about this before we make a motion.
Yes, so this request came on just the other day. So pursuant to the action taken of cleaning up the homeless encampment down there, we continue to operate that as a construction site. So we secured the road during that operation from Monday and Tuesday. I'm asking to keep that closed until August 1st. We know that we have trauma services will be coming in the week of July 8th, and they continue to work on that property. The Sanford Housing Authority has a PNS on that. It'll be shortly thereafter that they should be able to exercise the PNS, the purchase and sales, and start hopefully almost immediately taking action on the property. During the day of the work on the encampment, I talked with Isaac and his partner that own the stone mill. I should come up with a better reference, 72 Emery or whatever that is, but-
It is.
Yeah, 72 Emery Street.
You should know, there's a lot of licenses there.
There's a lot of licenses there. No, seriously, there's at least 60 vehicles parked out there, working there on a daily basis.
And they have a store there, it's active, yeah.
Yeah, and they have more coming there as well, because they told me at length on Monday, so.
Get on sick.
I get a lot of information. So, but, you know, so I cleared what the city, you know, where the barricades are now. There's no interruption of their business flow or their large trucks, the use for deliveries and shipping and such under that. I did not talk with the owner operators or businesses within Mill 67, the Sanford Mill, unhindered because the barricades are either side of that. So the only access that's being blocked off is to the Regco property, period. That's it. You can't, now, you can't go through, it's not a throughway anymore, but that's blocked off. So we'd like to preserve that for the next month of time. I used August 1st just because that's an easy date for the next 30 days to work on that area and get it back to what it needs to be, and then turn that over to the Housing Authority for future development.
So in order not, I'm thinking, I think particularly of the High Street side, is there a way to not have that road closed sign up there, have it down below and make it a better barricade where you're actually blocking access so people don't get to-
Coming in from the High Street side, you're saying?
Just High Street, because you can visually see that, I don't know, it makes it feel like, it makes it feel like you can't get to the businesses even though you can, or have a different word, or I know why you wouldn't want people really going in there much during the hard work, but at some point, you just need people to know they can't go from here into this small section and make it so that they can't even get through.
Right.
I don't know, if there's a way not to have that sign up on Main, up on High Street so people know that they can at least come down to the business.
Right, understood.
At some point, so. Council Martel?
Thank you. The only other comment I had, and thank you for commenting about that sign, because I did go down there today, and it does look like the road is closed on both entrances. So I think that would be helpful. The other thing I would just ask if we could, on the Emery Street side, show, have some kind of signage for a detour to High Street so people can get into those businesses or know how to get into those businesses if they're not familiar with the other entrance. So maybe as simple as a sign that says, you know, business access on High Street or something like that, or a couple detour signs. I'm not sure what makes most sense, and I don't want to dictate that, but just something I was thinking about as far as being able to get to those, you know, the haircut place and whatever else is in those, the mill buildings. Thank you.
Even if it says use High Street entrance for-
Okay.
Deputy Mayor, one quick question, or more for public knowledge, but in terms of the barriers that are being, or that have been installed there for the purposes of our fire or police access in the event of emergency, they are easily, somewhat easily movable because there were the water barriers.
The water barriers, not the concrete barriers. The concrete barriers are only on the off-street property. The ones in the street are water barriers specifically because we can hit the plugs and even without hitting the plugs, the fire apparatus can push them out of the way, but hit the plugs, they drain almost immediately, and then you can throw them by hand, so. Not to give the public good ideas, but you know.
Be began time, okay. Are there any other questions? Do I have a motion? I'll be patient. Council Martel?
So I'll make a motion to accept closing the road while clearance is completed, and additional signage will be moved around and put up as necessary.
Do I have a second? Council Trenchmontane?
I'll second that.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much. Council member comments? I'll open it to the floor. Council Stackpole?
Actually made a note tonight.
Wow, I'm impressed.
So I wanted to go first because I wanted to beat Pete Trenchmontane in congratulating the Celts in being the NBA champions. So anyways, congratulations Celtics, it was a great season. And I go back to, this is a funny, kind of a funny story. I think I was in the sixth grade, so I have no idea how old I was, 10, 11, or something like that. And there was a little special in some newspaper for tickets. Now, I grew up in Beverly, Massachusetts, so I grew up about 20 miles north of Boston. And I had no idea really, I knew what basketball was, but I had no idea what pro-basketball was. And so I brought this little thing home to my father, and I said, "Look, Dad, this little ad here says you need tickets to go to the Celtics and, I don't know what they were, Buck and a Half or something at that point." By the way, I looked up tickets to last night's game. The cheapest ticket was $1,300. The most expensive ticket was like $20,000, you know, it was like row three.
If you're looking it up last night, of course it's going to be that high. That's scalping.
Yesterday, yesterday. Well, I got an ad that says we still have tickets available. I had to see how much it cost. Anyway, so we go to this game, and I see these basketball players like Big Bill Russell, John Havlicek, Bob Cousy. These guys were legend, yeah, right, God, I'm old, that's right. These guys, you know, the current-day legends, and that's followed my interest in the Boston Celtics and in basketball in general through my life. So it was really great to see them win Banner 18, that kind of special thing for me. I made a lot of noise last time about the school vote and people going out and voting. I'm not foolish enough to think that I had a great impact on the wonderful turnout that we had, because I'm sure there were PTAs and teachers and administrators and all kinds of other people getting the vote out also. But I do want to say to everybody who voted, thank you for voting. I do believe it's one of the important things that we do as citizens in here, supporting our schools and educating our kids. Great job, everybody, on the encampment. I said this privately also to the city manager, great job, and I mean that sincerely. This is, I can look back on this and say, I have no idea how it got done, but it got done, and it got done because everybody worked real hard on whatever their specific area is. And I'm just going to say to everybody, including myself, let's all do our best not to allow anything like this to happen again, as best we can. And I got a new dog. I don't know that I've spoke about my new dog. No, this is the same dog I've had for a couple of years. But when I used to talk about walking my dog, which is what I'm going to talk about, I used to talk about the moose. Then I used to walk around, the moose was my giant golden retriever that I had. Well, he's passed on, and I got a new dog. And this dog, her name is Orla, which means golden princess. And she is golden, she's a golden retriever, and she is a princess. She doesn't want to do anything, okay? Golden retriever, does not swim, does not like the water, doesn't like to get her toes wet, doesn't play with toys, doesn't do anything. But she likes to walk, so I've been out walking my dog. And as I've said before, it's always dangerous when I go out walking my dog. And of course, where I walk is down by Number One Pond, so here it comes once again. We need to keep that area clean, and, you know, we're doing a pretty good job as a community, but I still find dog excrement down there. I still see plastic bags with dog excrement in it. Even though we've gone to great extents, I'll just say one more time, we were anyways, I don't know what the supply is, I don't know that it's always full of plastic bags down there, but we were supplying bags. We have a special container for dog excrement down there, plus we established that you could put your dog excrement in a plastic bag in a trash can down there. So you don't have to go to the special container. You can just put it in a trash can. Please, pick it up and take care of it. I can't imagine somebody just allowing their dog to take a dump on the grass right where people are walking and then just walk away. I just can't imagine that. So clean it up. There's also a lot of people that are fishing down there, which is great. It's wonderful. I love to see all the action down there when I walk. There's people all along the rock wall there, there's the skiers that are out there getting ready for whatever they're going to do this summer, the numerous presentations they're going to do. There's all kinds of other people around here. Is it Addys Food Truck? The food truck is down there almost on a daily basis. So it's a happening place. People are going fishing, and they're leaving their drink bottles, their bait containers, things like that, all along the shoreline. Not everybody, and there's a lot of kids that are doing it. So I guess I'll say specifically to the kids or to the parents of these kids, please remind them to clean up after themselves. There are trash receptacles down there. Please pick up after yourselves. I walked by a big family down there, a bunch of whole little kids, little dinky Donald Duck rods and things like that. I went down, then I came back, they're all gone in their car, and there's all kinds of Gatorade bottles and other stuff that's on the grass. It's like, come on, guys, pick it up. This is going to be a special area in this community, starting in 2026. It's going to be a real showplace. So let's get ready, community, for it now, and let's get it picked up, let's take care of it, and be proud of that area. Thank you.
Can you imagine what their house looks like if they don't pick up at the saying?
No comment.
Okay. Council Hanselman?
And thank you, Council Stackpole, for reminding me, the dog waste bag dispensers have been empty for quite some time, and I keep forgetting to mention it. So it'd be great if we can get those filled. I try to always bring my own bags, of course, in an emergency, or if my dogs are having a bad walk, I need extras.
It really should only be for an emergency.
It's more for emergency use, yeah. And then if we could just get the geese to stop pooping down there, it'd be great. I don't-
There's a 12-gauge solution to the geese problem.
I got to tell you, when you mentioned the Canadian geese, I would love to look at what a program, what kind of program we could have to fix them, like Boston does. It would be nice to, I don't know if there's a program, but we're going to start having quite a crowd in this town.
Put that on the goal list for next year's council. And then, as many of you know, my family owns Franny's Mini Donuts, and we are so excited to welcome our new neighbor in, for many of us, what we all called the Bergeron Shoe Building forever, but knots and bolts, which I trip over that for some reason. But they opened up recently. It's a lovely store with yarn and fabrics and crafts and gifts, and I think I even found a Father's Day gift there. So lots of great things. They're open Wednesdays and Thursdays from the afternoon to the evening, and then Friday, Saturday, Sunday, really all day. And so you can pop in there, as well as Franny's, hit the- all day. And so you can pop in there, as well as Franny's, hit the farmer's market on a Saturday. Downtown's kind of bustling these days. Old timer shop right next door is great as well. So just remind folks to get downtown when you can, and definitely visit the new store and give them some support. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Martel, you have anything to say tonight?
Yes, thank you. You'd mentioned that we're revisiting the voting booths, the voting locations again. So I, I think that I'd like to have discussions around that earlier than later, since it was a rather contentious discussion last time, just to make sure that we have majority alignment at least before spending a lot of city resources on moving that forward.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Council Trenchmontane?
Well, Bob, you stole, you stole my thunder on the Celtics, so I guess I'll leave out the high school senior year that we skipped and went to the game. Go Celtics.
No, we want to hear it, Pete. Go.
Just briefly, I wanted to say thank you to Diane Small. I, we grew up together. I'm so impressed. I, I'm just amazed at what you have done. I've called you several times. I'll call you several more. I just wanted to say thank you. This is in a good direction that Sanford's going, and, and it's, it's a lot to do with you, so thank you.
Council Hitchcock?
Well, I think any comments I would have have been said by my fellow counselors here, so I won't add anything more to that, but I do have a future agenda item if we can shift to that.
Go for it, you can start there.
Okay. I think we would like to have a discussion about the structure and future of the Sanford Springville Development Corporation.
Okay.
I think we had our last meeting on that in June 6th, I believe, June 5th, and I think there's some, we'd like to have some clarity on, from that board about the city council's view of that board, how it should be going forward and structured. They have their, the board has their own view as well, but it'd be good to get a meeting of the minds and see where we should, how we should structure that, where to go from there.
I kind of think of you like an airport advisory board. But yeah, maybe, it may be wise to have that discussion and go from there. Any other future agenda items? Seeing none? Anything? Okay. I'll declare us adjourned. We have a couple things to sign.